Clock on my clock, I'm just gonna check to make sure we have a recording. So are you ready Linda?
I'm all set.
Did we lose Linda?
I'm all set.
Oh, okay, great. Alright, so then it is 7:01 by my computer, it's August 31st, 2020. I'm Megan Lally, I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Town of Andover's Inland Wetlands and Water Forces Commission to Order. Everybody, please mute themselves. The commissioners are requested to keep their video on throughout the meeting. Members of the public, it's optional, although it is preferable if you go to speak to turn your video on. Just helps clarify. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and make sure that the people who aren't muted, and just in case they're walking around the houses, I'm gonna mute them. Okay, so I believe everyone is on mute. Okay, so we'll do a quick unmute of the commissioners in order to do roll call. So Megan Lally, Chair, obviously present, Vice Chairman George Elliott is present. I see Commissioner Ed Smith, Commissioner Jim Halassee, and Commissioner Jed Larson. So we have all of our regular commissioners in attendance. She has not yet been appointed to the commission, but we will be submitting a recommendation to the board as likely to do so. But Gabrielle Anderson is also on the meeting today, listening in. Don't have any commentary or voting privileges during this meeting. And then is William Paul?
Yes.
Oh, I see you, okay, great. Allison's iPad, got it, alright. So Mr. Monroe has also expressed interest in the commission, I invited him to listen in on tonight's meeting, so I wanted to check if he was on the line. Okay, so there's no need to seat any alternates. We'll move on to the third item of the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. All of the commissioners should have received a copy of the August 3rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes, and they are posted online as well for members of the public to view. And I will open the floor to any discussion on the minutes.
This is Jed on page two, the third paragraph down, second sentence. A little typo, talks about the back property line is not crowded, and it's missing the D.
Any other comments on the minutes? I was not present at the meeting, but I had a comment regarding page four. The second line, or the first and second line from the top. It notes that Ms. Puerto is working with her engineer to resubmit a new permit regarding the activities at 129 Hebron Road. And I'm just concerned about the language there, because the commission has not received a permit or application from that property. So I would recommend that the minutes be revised accordingly.
Yes, Commissioner, Chairman, it's Jim Halassee, did you hear my earlier comment, or I was muted?
I did not hear your comment, I apologize.
Okay, number 11 indicates that I moved to schedule a special meeting. I believe what I actually did is just pointed out the action date. The mandatory action date on the application. This for, specifically for 12 Webster Lane. That a big deal.
Linda, did you get that?
Um, I believe, I'll, yeah, but I believe Jim actually did make the motion. But I'll check the audio on that, and if it's incorrect, I'll correct it.
Okay. I thought we were waiting for for request, extension request. Possible extension request from the applicant. Okay, whatever, whatever the audio says is right.
Any further discussion?
So back to your comment, Megan, on page four. Was, was your concern that instead of resubmit a new permit, it was submit a new permit? Because we haven't actually got one yet?
Correct, yeah, the activities are not permitted by wetlands, and we have not received an application yet. So I just didn't want the record to be misleading. So I, not having been present, if those who are present are in agreement, I would suggest changing the language to, to submit an application for a permit.
I agree with that based on my recollection from the meeting.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Vice Chairman Elliott or Commissioner Smith, did you have any comments?
No.
None.
Okay. Alright, hearing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Jed, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from 3 August.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jed Larson. Seconded by George Elliott to approve the August 3rd regular minutes. The corrections noted. Any additional discussion? And I'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chairman Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner Halassee?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Chairman Lally will abstain, having not been present. So motion carries 401. So that brings us to item four on the agenda, permit applications. And I didn't mention at the beginning of the meeting, but those who are unfamiliar with the special meeting, we can't make additions or additions to the agenda. We can potentially change the order, but just so everyone's clear, we can't be adding items to the agenda. So if you were hoping to sit through the meeting and then add something at the end, I'll see through that. Okay, so moving on, item 4A was discussion of application IWWC 20-21, submitted by Manuel Correa and Jerry Hardesty for activities at 12 Webster Lane, a subdivision and new residential construction in an upland review area. And I do believe we've had some new materials submitted since our last meeting, which I have asked Agent Wagner to present to the commission.
Yeah, I had a letter from, well, I had a new site plan. That showed the house rotated 90 degrees. That was posted Friday, I believe. And then there was a a letter dated August 31st from Engineer Brandon Handfield. His evaluation of the current plan. And then there was another letter from Hank Bruner. Also August 31st, that has some recommendations and his analysis of the current site plan. That's, that's it for the new materials.
Do any of the commissioners need a minute to review those materials?
What was the question? I have all the materials, I think.
I'm hopeful everyone was able to review them in advance of the meeting, but did anyone need, did anyone not receive the materials or need a minute to look at a specific item before we proceed with the discussion?
I received them.
Commissioners Halassee, Larson, or Elliott?
Chairman Elliott, I did receive the materials and I have reviewed them.
So is Jed?
I'll see as well.
Have or have not, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand. Go ahead, Commissioner Larson.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I'm going to proceed with discussion on the application, I'll open the floor.
Excuse me?
Jerry, I received the engineer.
Yeah, I have not seen the letter from Hank Bruner. I didn't see, get a copy of this sent to me, and I didn't get a copy of the one from the reviewing engineer either. I, I read their comments in their minutes, but I haven't seen their letter, and I can't see the bottom of Hank's letter here on my screen.
So I'm gonna switch over hopefully to the town website. Can you see my screen, does it have applications submitted pending?
No, because I can't scroll down. For whatever reason, okay, letter.
But do, is it a web, right now, I can't, I can't see what, I think I'm sharing what I'm sharing, but I can't tell. A website, is it the town's website?
That's what's showing on my screen right now.
So all materials received by the commission are posted to this page under the associated application. So our friends would be for Agent Wagner to forward materials to the applicant and their authorized agents as they come in. But you can also always check here, and the information, that's the next discussion item, but information will be on here. So go through them, but the Agent Wagner just points about where the revised site plan, we sent correspondence to, it was submitted on August 10th, but it doesn't have a revision date on it. That's different from the previous versions that are submitted, so that's something we wanted to discuss between this evening. And then the letter from Hank Bruner, dated 31st, and the letter from Engineer Handfield, also dated 31st.
I, I need to clarify something here. Megan, if I could, revised site, the revised site plan for, on 810 is not is not what we are applying for. That is to demonstrate an alternative. Frankly, my my clients have told me that if that's what you're going to approve, then we might as well just skip the application, because that scenario is, doesn't work for them.
I don't think that was made clear to the commission. That was forwarded to us with the understanding that it was a revised site plan.
It is, it is the site plan that will be it's the site plan that will be submitted to planning and zoning, because it meets the subdivision regulations. Alright, but the house turned in that direction and this the driveways and the septic system are not are not something that they feel is worth constructing.
This, I think Alright, so we don't want to see planning and zoning documents. We need to know what materials you're submitting in support of the wetlands application. So if there's something that wetlands should not be considering, then it should not be presented to wetlands, because it's going to confuse things.
At the last, at the last meeting.
Plan that's on. Are you there, Mr. Hardesty?
Yes, I am, I, you were, you're frozen on my screen, so I didn't hear the last of what you were saying. But at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'm having trouble.
Can everybody else hear me?
Allison can hear you.
I can hear you.
At the last meeting, Mr. Larson expressed concern that, that the plans were not consistent, that he was seeing two different plans. And I, I wanted to illustrate that we can show a plan that is compliant with the subdivision regulations. But this is not the plan that we expect to, that my clients would expect to construct. The very first set of plans that I submitted, that are, that have a big preliminary across the bottom of them, that is the layout that we would propose to construct. That's the layout that we presented initially. It's the one that we feel is most appropriate. And it's the same one that Mr. Elliott made a motion to approve on the 1st of June.
So the map that's on the screen, and difficulty because you haven't been providing revision dates or any explanation to the nature of what you just said on, on the design plan. So that's confusing to me at least. So what you're saying is the map that we see on the screen, which it's still dated, deleted, is August 2nd, but it was actually, it's since then, is those designed to be considered for the application, rather than alternate design that the applicant considered. Is that correct?
Megan, I, I lost the last half of what you were saying. I'm sorry.
I'm also only picking up bits and pieces of what you're saying, Megan.
I'm, hold on, give me one second. No, not, I'm always not my friend. Apparently they don't have self-service in the town community room, and internet reception is poor, so I'm gonna do my best. So I think we're confused by this site plan, and I just want to make sure that we're clear. So what I was asking is, is this plan, the one that's, it's dated August 2nd, 2020, as the latest revision, but it was actually revised more recently than that, it has the house rotated 90 degrees. That's an alternative in, in wetlands language, that's an alternative applicant considered and subsequently rejected?
Correct.
Okay, and can you explain the reasons for rejection?
Yeah. They didn't feel like a garage forward situation like that, and turned at the strange angle that it is. And having the driveway where it is with the proposed septic system in a less desirable location, the whole thing didn't work for them, and they felt that if that was all they could do with that particular lot, that it would not be worth the continued efforts to have it approved. They didn't want to build that house.
And I'm gonna close this version and go back. Believe it might be this one, let me check. This is the original site plan dated August 2nd, 2020, that I think was the most recent version of the design that the applicant is proposing. Is this correct?
Yes. With one.
This is the design that the commission will consider. No?
This, I, I would, I would add one more caveat to this, though, if I might. I would prefer that we switch the primary and reserve septic systems. I don't think that will have any impact at all on the wetlands, and it will be a far better septic system design.
Does that bring us back to the initial plan you submitted?
Well, the initial plan I submitted was the one that we'd most like to have enacted, yes.
Answering my question. So I'm gonna go to the initial plan submitted. We can only approve a plan. A map, so we need to be clear on which one it is we're considering.
I would like the very first plan that was submitted to be acted on, the one that Mr. Elliott was going to act on, on the 1st of June.
You keep bringing that up, the, the fact of the matter is that motion was not acted on.
That's correct.
Therefore, relevant, so we're going to proceed with tonight.
Excuse me, again, with reference to the documents that we have on file, the description of the first plan doesn't really help. I need a document number, I need some kind of identification, so that I can pull up that file without having to grope all over.
There you go.
Okay, this is the screen sharing file. Talk Korea supplemental information.
This is the original map that was submitted with the application. It does not address any comments submitted subsequently by either Engineer Handfield or Mr. Bruner, as it was received prior to those comments. And this is the design that you would like the commission to.
This is, now, again, if, if if the commission feels that it's most important to, to move the house a few feet further to the southwest, or move something a couple of feet, then I don't have a problem with that. But this is the most appropriate layout for this house on this lot. And, and this is, this is what my clients would like to have approved. There really should be no reason not to approve this. Because we're in the, because we're in the upland review area.
That's being asked to, Bill.
I, I'm sorry, was that a question?
Uh, no, you, you started speaking, and I was giving you a chance to speak.
Because this is in the upland review area, we can always. The commissioner.
Perhaps Commissioner Larson could speak to the concerns that he brought up last time on this plan, the first plan submitted.
So the, and I was gonna ask Jerry, help me understand why this diagram with the septic layout is preferable in your mind to the one that puts the actual septic system outside the upland review area?
Because of these, because of the slope of the land. Jed, towards the, towards the center of this property, where the, where the property, where the new property line would be, is a very flat area. And as we approach the wetlands, it gets steeper and steeper. The Connecticut Health Code requires that there be a minimum leaching system spread. And that is calculated based on the depth of decent soil and the slope of the land. So as the land slopes greater and greater, the smaller the system can be as far as the length. The soils are better, and the slope is better towards test pit numbers, number C, TPC. So that's the area that we would like to have the septic system, because it's the most appropriate for a septic system. We're still more than 50 feet from the wetlands. And, and it should be fine, and there should be no contamination to the wetlands from that system. Also, we'll keep the driveway on the uphill side of it, so that any compaction of soils won't interfere with the septic system.
Okay, and to me, that sounds reasonable. I'm not a soil scientist, not a civil engineer, or any of those kind of things. But we did have the, both an outside engineer, and we've got Hank Bruner that submitted letters recommending that, you know, they both suggested putting the, the septic system outside the 100 foot, and, you know, rotating the house. And, and that's what I was looking for, was for a discussion on that. And, and at this point, because the, the second submission had the septic tank swapped, that was consistent with our engineer's recommendation. And so he hasn't, I don't know that we've gotten the opportunity to, to have him listen to the discussion on is it okay in his mind, you know, he recommended moving it outside 100 foot. I would have thought that he would consider all the same information that you're, you're telling us tonight on the soils and slopes and, and all that kind of stuff.
And, well, I'm sure that he didn't look to design the septic system. And if he had, then he would have made a mention of the, of the minimum leaching system spread calculation. And that's, that's one of the aspects of this. The other thing is that he was asked to look at what could be done to stay out of the, you know, what could be done to minimize those things? You know, stay out of the 100 foot setback. And you can do that, and, and I've shown that, you can stay out of the 100 foot setback area. But it's not the appropriate use of this land, it's not the best use of this land. And what we have shown is can be done without an impact to the wetlands. In my opinion. And, and I think it should be your opinion too, to be honest with you. And this should be approved conditional on the septic system being no greater than, or no closer than 57 feet to the wetlands, and that the house should be no greater, no closer than 75 feet to wetlands. And if it needs to be moved another five or 10 feet, then you say, you know, 85 feet from wetlands. But to require him.
Unfortunately I'm gonna ask you to, to hold on for a second. Unfortunately, Engineer Handfield is not on the call this evening, so we can't ask for his input at the moment. But he, I believe based on the last letter he submitted was based on most recent site plan submitted, which we did not understand, was an alternative that was rejected. I'm pulling that up just now. Unclear to me whether this letter is addressing the original version or the revised version. So I'm gonna ask, Mr. Bruner is on the line this evening, however, so I'm gonna ask him to speak. We did have a most recent letter from him, the, the David August 31st letter. And I'm gonna ask him to submit comments to the commission as to how his opinion has changed, if at all, based on tonight's discussion that the, the plan to be considered is the original plan. The, not the most recent one that was submitted. Are you on the line?
Yes, I am, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you, thank.
Oh, great. Yeah, from my perspective, it doesn't really change.
Oh, great. Yeah, from my perspective, it doesn't really change much regarding my recommendations associated with the driveway and the, you know, revegetation along the, the edge of the fence line in the wetland. You know, the issue is, I think during pre-construction and during construction, it's easy to handle the soil erosion control, as, as Mr. Hanfield also mentioned. My original concerns were one of, you know, the state, the condition that's left after, when you have more impervious surface with a driveway there, you have more lawn, you have, you know, a portion of the house. And the, the recommendations I had were for how to mitigate against that. So, what I put in the updated letter that I submitted today was that, you know, to include a gravel driveway rather than a paved driveway to minimize impervious surface in either of the configurations, to maintain a 25-foot strip of unmoaned or annually mown land that would extend from the fence line area out, where that's, obviously, that's only feasible once you get to a part where it's, you can gain the 25 feet, because the driveway comes in pretty tight to the wetland immediately adjacent at the entrance. But the goal of that is to provide a level of vegetation that, that is more absorptive. It's not forested there. You do have a tree line, but the goal is to, rather than having lawn right up to the tree line, try to buffer that with some thicker vegetation that gives you a little bit more buffering capacity for the wetland corridor there. So, those are really the two key pieces, regardless of whether the house was within the, the 100-foot zone or kicked out of the 100-foot zone. Obviously, having it kicked out is helpful in that it reduces disturbance within that area, which serves as a, you know, as a buffer. But, you know, the gaining, you know, that, the amount of distance there is, to me, is more minimal, as long as best management practices are followed. I am a little, I, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak highly about the septic, but that is something I think that, to be considered, because that is fairly close to a wetland system. And septic systems, while they're good, do not necessarily catch everything. And, you know, that should be looked at carefully. From an ecological standpoint, I don't necessarily see a huge issue, because as I mentioned in my first report, that the value of this system is less. There's not a lot of standing water there, serving as breeding sites for any species of amphibians or fish or any, any of the wildlife like that. It's more of a corridor. It's more of an intermittent drainage swale that, that basically serves as an ecological corridor. So, I'm actually less concerned about inputs that would affect any breeding populations that might be there. So, you know, I think there's more flexibility for consideration, given the lower ecological value. My main concern is really more trying to mitigate some of those potential impacts by increasing the buffering potential through vegetation, as well as through preventing, you know, more, more pavement in the area. Because it's also a fairly impacted system with a roadway that's already there. It's surrounded by residential development. So, avoiding any additional impacts, I think, would be very helpful. Another alternative that might be considered also is to plant some, some low shrubs or some denser shrub growth along the, the perimeter of the driveway to provide a little bit more structure. That can also be visually aesthetic and pleasing to the applicant, I would think. And that could also be a, a way to sort of help out with some of the buffering capacity. So, I, in my opinion, from an ecological perspective, it would be really looking, again, at the septic and giving more consideration to that, as long as the applicant was willing to consider some of these best management approaches to the driveway and to the, you know, vegetation maintenance on that side of the, of the lot.
Thank you, Mr. Gruner. Can you clarify the commission, for the commission? Do you feel that the design presented on the screen, the original design submitted, is likely to physically impact the wetlands?
Yes, as I said in my letter that I submitted today, whenever you develop, it's pretty well documented that development within 100 feet, actually, it can be as close as 150 feet, depending on the type of, type of development, type of activity. There's various factors. But if you look at a lot of recommendations, a lot, a lot of reasons why towns have 100-foot setback areas or review areas is because the, the literature supports that there's activity within that zone typically can have impacts on the wetland system. So, I believe that there would be some impacts to the physical characteristics, likely through runoff associated with the driveway, use of fertilizers on lawns, things like that. Those are the typical things. Additional nutrients. That also gets into what the septic impacts can be, because you can get some nitrogen input or various inputs that can come through the septic systems, and including chemicals that are disposed of, you know, pharmaceuticals and so forth. But that has to be weighed within consideration of, you know, looking at the soils and looking at the slopes and looking at a variety of characteristics. I think it's easy, in, in, in a number of cases, it's, you can use best management practices to start to mitigate some of that, which is why, despite the fact I felt that there were likely to be impacts associated with development within the 100-foot zone, that there were some mitigative measures that could be taken to lessen those impacts.
Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Gruner?
Smith has no questions.
Alexi, no questions.
Again, I have a question regarding Hanfield's letter, which I'm trying to pull up here, to the effect that essentially, no impact, no adverse-
George, I interrupted. Is it the one dated August, is it the August 31st one?
That's right.
Did you have a question, George? I, I didn't hear a question. Sorry.
Okay, it says here that, "It is my opinion that the proposed plan will not result in adverse or significant impact to the inland wetlands and watercourses, presuming the conditions that follow." So, the question in my mind is, which preliminary plan exactly is he referring to here? As far as I can tell, his letter does refer to the plan that Engineer Hardisty would like us to approve as part of the, that, that that is the basis for the application.
I agree with you. I, I, as I read the letter, it, it seems to reference the initial site plan submitted that was labeled preliminary on the bottom and dated only August 26, 2019, with no revisions. So, yes. Any additional discussion by the commission? Any questions of either Mr. Gruner or Engineer Hardisty?
No, I think the original plan was, is the most appropriate plan, the most beneficial use of this plan. I think it can be, I think the house and septic system, as shown, can be constructed with-
Mr. Hardisty, I, I understand. I'm, I'm giving the commission a chance to ask questions or, or discuss.
Okay.
If you have new information to add, I'd be happy with that. But otherwise, just please refrain for a minute.
Smith has no questions.
Larson has no questions.
Alexi, no question.
Thank you. Agent Wagner, anything additional to add?
Uh, no.
Megan, would it be appropriate to ask Kevin if he has any comments? I'm not sure he's still on the line, but he's faithfully attended every one of our sessions without having the opportunity to say anything.
I am blanking on his last name. If you can assist me with that, that would be, did someone say it?
Arnson.
Okay, thank you. I believe you're referring to the adjacent neighbor, Arnson. Thank you. I see I'm on line. I'm gonna, Mr. Arnson, and he did it himself. Sorry about that. But I'd like to add any comment for the commission to consider before it possibly makes a decision on this application?
I don't. I will have questions for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but nothing that applies to the Wetlands Commission. The only thing was just the septic being within the 100-foot upland review area.
Is, what about it? Do you have a question or statement related to it?
No, I'm, I mean, it, it's clearly shown on the plan. Everything's defined. So, I really don't, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the floor to discussion, and if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
This is Jed, and I guess I would ask Jerry if his client would still consider building the property if we asked him to put the septic outside the 100-foot upland review area?
I'm, I don't see Jerry in front of his screen. I'm not sure if he left the room for a moment. Oh, he's back. Can you repeat your question, Jed?
I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that, to be honest with you, Jed. I really don't. Moving the septic system outside of the 100-foot buffer is going to require a bigger system, and I don't see it operating as well. I don't know the answer to that. I really don't.
Okay. And I didn't have any other questions.
Feel ready to make a decision on this application? Thank you. So, I will add to the conversation. It's relevant. One minute, Mr. Chairman Elliott. So, we did speak to our special limbs about this application, as well as others. And he reminded us that in order to request alternatives to be considered, and I, I might not be paraphrasing exactly correctly, but do need to have reasons to believe that there's an impact from the, a physical impact to the wetland of the current design. I have not seen any information presented that would demonstrate the current septic system is likely to have a physical impact on the wetlands. Any of the other commissioners feel a gap at this point? Okay. Vice Chairman Elliott, did you have a comment to add or a question?
I was wondering if we were ready to entertain a motion.
I, I'm ready.
Okay. I would move to approve the application with standard conditions and with, let's see, how to phrase it. I would like to see the recommendations by Mr. Gruner included in the conditions of the permit.
Okay. Do I have a second for the motion?
Ed Smith seconds the motion made by George Elliott.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to discussion.
Yeah, Alexi, I just had a concern as to how we would structure an approval that would raise Hank Gruner's recommendation, as opposed to just a blanket reference to his, his letter.
Okay.
He's suggesting that the maintenance of a, of- Appreciate it. I'm just wondering how, this came up before at a previous meeting, indicated it was simply a, a recommendation. I'm wondering if, if that would be the extent of it, or whether we would have something added to the plan that would be just part of the site plan and enforced as such.
Do any other commissioners-
So, Commissioner Smith, I would say that we just use those three bullet points as far as the adjustments.
I think, I'll just point out, I believe the third bullet is, is addressed by our standard conditions. So, it would really be the, the first two bullets. That would be additions to the special conditions of the permit, if the commission saw-
Megan, this is Agent Wagner.
Go ahead, Agent.
The last one, it said, I'm looking in the paper, that the other wetland on the other side of the property should be protected with sediment and erosion control fencing. It doesn't have a bullet point, but it looks like it should. It's the last-
That you, I'm sorry. Would that be a recommendation that you would include?
Um, that would be part of his recommendations. There would be the three bullet points, and then there was another one on page two. It doesn't have a bullet point, but it looks like it's a separate recommendation. I remember talking about it with Hank. So, I think I would add those four as conditions.
Megan, did you want me to address that? This is Hank.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, um, yeah, the reason I didn't bullet that was because the first three bullets were really associated with the wetland system there on the east, that drainage, and that was a separate one. And I, I believe Megan is correct that the, the bullet I included, the third bullet, installing sediment and erosion control barriers, is definitely caught by the basic regulations and also, you know, is, is already planned. I just wanted to reiterate that. So, it would really be those first two bullets regarding that wetland on the east. And then, as Joe is mentioning, and in abundance of caution, I saw that although it was noted that due to the topography, it was highly unlikely that runoff would be going toward the small wetland depressions. I thought it would be good to, just out of abundance of caution, to, to encircle those with some, or at least on the disturbance side, with some sediment fencing.
Thank you. Agent Wagner, are there any additional special conditions that you would recommend the commission consider as part of a permit approval?
Nothing, nothing I can think of.
This is Jed. I'd like to ask Hank one more time to just be clear to me. His initial letter that recommended the septic outside the 100-foot, he had some, he had some concerns about that, and why he wanted it outside the 100-foot upland review. He is okay with the, with us putting, he is okay with Jerry's rationale for why we would put it inside the upland review area?
I actually don't believe that I addressed the septic in my initial review. I think that came up through- I did not. I talked about pushing the, the, the house, reconfiguring the housing lot, that position of the house, and the, and then the issues of the buffering capacity I dealt with. that position of the house, and then the issues of the buffering capacity I dealt with. The, I mean, I think the septic system, you know, that's a, I mean, that's really a big engineering question. From an ecological standpoint, I didn't feel, because I did not see anything that was a vernal pool or held water that would likely support breeding populations of amphibians or fish or invertebrates that, you know, I wasn't really as much worried about septic inputs or heavily worried about, you know, the proximity. I wanted to try to mitigate as much as possible was the goal that I put in there, given the value that I had assigned to the system based on its ecological functions. So I didn't really get into the septic system at all. I did not, I did not pull that out and call that out. I really dealt with the housing location more from an impervious surface standpoint, as well as the driveway and the the revegetation.
Okay, thank you, Hank.
Yep.
Mr. Gruner, is your recommendation, let's see, you had noted a recommendation to maintain a gravel rather than a paved driveway. Is the intention of that recommendation basically to improve the perviousness of the driveway and therefore would other materials other than gravel be part of your recommendation, for example, pervious pavement or things like that, the applicant options?
Sure, yeah. And that's exactly what the recommendation is for, is to, you know, eliminate, you know, a paved surface that, you know, has high runoff. So, you know, pervious pavers would be fine. Gravel driveway would be fine. There's various ways that, techniques that could be used for that, certainly. The goal is to try to just avoid the impervious surface.
How see, I believe that the intent of the bump out was to comply with the fire marshal provided turn around.
Is this the bump out we're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, and simply the recommendation I had with that was, once again, just trying to reduce, Joe and I had talked about this, just trying to reduce the amount of impervious surface. But if it's, you know, essential for safety, obviously that trumps.
Mr. Hardisty, can you answer that question, whether the bump out is a requirement to meet fire marshal recommendations or requirements?
That's more of a requirement to be able to turn a car around. But that, you know, that includes emergency access vehicles as well.
Could the bump out be located on the far, the other side?
As far as I'm concerned, it could be, yes. I don't think that there's any restrictions as to proximity to the property line, as long as we don't go over it. So, yeah, if that's if that's that big of an issue, then I'm sure we can work around it.
Aesthetically, it would it would look better to the wet, but now it's closer to that, those wetlands, right?
I am not qualified to talk about aesthetics.
I think that's beyond the scope of our discussion.
I would agree with that statement. And I think it's a valid point that moving the bump outs to the other side of the driveway would is it further from the wetlands that have been the primary focus of our discussion, but it would place it closer to the other wetlands on the property. So the commission should consider that as well. So there's a motion on the floor made by George Elliott, Vice Chairman Elliott, to move to approve the application. It was seconded by Ed Smith. The original motion was to approve with the standard conditions and with those of Mr. Gruner as outlined, let's see, in his February, August 31st letter. Are any additional discussion, any applications to the motion, or should we move to vote?
Can we take that as the recommendations as they have evolved as our discussion? That is to say, rather than eliminate the bump out, we could say modify the bump out to reduce proximity to the wetlands, maintain the 25 strip. As you said, the sediment and erosion controls are part of standard conditions, so they're not additional conditions. And then finally, providing sediment and erosion control for the wetlands, well, and depressions to the west side of the parcel. So we have three conditions under discussion that are not part of the standard conditions.
Any comments from the commission response to Vice Chairman Elliott? The only other modification to the motion I would recommend would be clarifying that it's a two-year permit as opposed to a longer duration permit, and that it applies to the site plan presented. I was concerned by, I think it may have been captured in the last meeting of motions, a discussion that the site plan was intended to represent a worst-case scenario and left to infer that the, you know, the site plan could change. If that's the case, if the site plan changes, and this is really a statement directed at the applicant and their agent, if the site plan changes, perhaps through planning and zoning approval, or otherwise, a modification would need to be submitted to wetlands for permit approval. So the permit applies only to the site plan as presented. Okay, so I will paraphrase. The motion on the floor is to approve the application as presented in the initial site plan labeled preliminary. It was, motion was made by Vice Chairman Elliott, seconded by Chairman Smith. Conditions are to apply as well as the following special conditions, as noted in the August 31st letter by Mr. Gruner, and modified by the commission's discussion. So essentially that the bump out be redesigned to be located further away from the primary wetlands. The driveway surface be a more pervious surface than asphalt. Options include but are not limited to gravel, and that a 25-foot strip of vegetation is maintained out from the existing tree fence line. And the permanent duration is two years. Believe, does everyone, any comment before we move forward? Is that motion clear-ish to everyone? And I will entertain, entertain. I'll call for a vote at this time then on the motion. So Vice Chairman Elliott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Halisty?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Chairman Elliott, I vote aye as well. So the motion carries 500. Wagner, if you can work to put the public notice out to allow for the two-week public notice period and then draft a permit associated with this application. So the permit would be valid two weeks from this evening and then two years after that.
Okay.
Hardisty, did you have any questions of the commission before we move on to the next agenda item?
No.
Okay, so then please be in touch with Agent Wagner and follow up accordingly. Move on to the next agenda item, which is item 4B, Application IWWC 20-23, presented by William and Donna Phillips for activity at 57 Hindi Road, a new residential construction in an upland review area, which includes modification of a floodplain. I'm going to close out the items from the previous application. Application materials. I'm going to ask, same as for the last application, if Agent Wagner can walk us through the new application materials that have been submitted.
All right, we have a letter from August 24th from Brandon Handfield reviewing the current plan, revised through August 12th. And then he reviewed engineer Andrew Bushnell's response to, and then there was a letter from Brandon Handfield, August 31st, that was where he reviewed the current proposed plan and stated his opinion on it. And then there was also.
The one that's on my screen?
That's the letter from my conversation with Brandon, because the applicant wanted a clarification on the term flood-prone district. So I sent him her email and asked him for comments, and his comments are included in that, in that email, in that letter.
This plan, the most recent plan, I have, the most recent revision date is August 12th?
Correct.
Thank you. So I did deliver, because this is a big project, just to be applicants aware, I did deliver full-size plans to commissioners. I personally was having to the small screen. So the exception of, I believe, these last two letters that came in recently, the commissioners were provided with hard copies of the rest of the application material. I will open the floor to, I believe I see the applicant and the applicant's engineer, Mr. Bushnell, on the call this evening. So I'll open the floor to discussion by the commission. Hearing none. Agent Wagner, did you prepare any materials this evening for the commission to consider in relation to this application?
No, I didn't.
Do you have any recommendations for the commission to consider in relation to this application?
Nothing that I can think of.
You feel that all of the information requested by the commission, Mr. Gruner and engineer Handfield has been received at this time?
Um, I didn't get a letter from Mr. Gruner, I don't think.
Still on the call?
I am. Would you like me to address that, Megan?
Yes, and if you can specifically address any expected physical impacts to the wetland or water courses, and then your subsequent recommendations, if any, to mitigate those impacts.
Okay. Yeah, and the reason I didn't submit a letter, I can give you, you know, is really my thinking is not, there's really nothing that's changed on my recommendations from the first report. And, you know, quite frankly, one of the challenges with this that I was wrestling back and forth with is, as I stated in my original report, I don't see any direct impacts to the system associated with, that would affect the ecology of it with the construction of the house and the site preparation work. The only exception to that, which is being discussed by the engineer, is the, you know, the balancing of cuts and fills, where there's a proposal to remove some fill from part of the floodplain area is part of a balance. But I don't believe that would have a significant ecological impact on the ecosystem there or the species that are, that are there. My only recommendation that I had provided in there was really to provide exclusion fencing around the areas where there would be construction work, especially if activity was going to occur during the activity season of the wood turtles, which are state-listed species that were noted on the site plans through the NDB review. That would prevent those animals from moving into any of the areas and potentially being injured or killed. But the real, the real, I spent some significant time in the original report I did addressing something that, to a large extent, is actually somewhat beyond the purview of the wetland commission. And that's really the activities, the ongoing activities that will occur within the floodplain area. And the reason I did that is I wanted to get on the record some recommendations that hopefully the applicants would consider, sort of best management practices, and I presented them in a bit of a hierarchy. So from ideal to, you know, no real disturbance in a floodplain area to, you know, other activities that are, some of which are currently occurring in that floodplain area, where there's some mowed walkway strips, and there's some access areas, and in the past, I know there's been some gardening and so forth. And provided recommendations on how to continue with those activities without impacting the wood turtle populations there, having an inordinate impact on the ecosystem functions. But from a regulatory standpoint, as far as how the wetland commission could act on that, that's where the challenge becomes, because it really, they don't really have a physical, they don't really change the physical characteristics or have a, an impact on the wetland per se. So I was wrestling with how to best present that, and I chose to present it in that first report. If this was a larger subdivision, it could easily be dealt with through planning and zoning and conservation easement areas and recommendations. But this is not. So I offer those up really as an opportunity to, for the, for the applicant to consider uses of that floodplain area associated with the parcel. If that makes sense to everybody.
Does the commission have any questions or response to Mr. Gruner's comment? Okay, hearing none. Does either the applicant or their representative engineer Bushnell wish to provide any additional information about the application for the commission to consider? And engineer Bushnell, you are muted.
Sorry. Just to be clear, Brandon Handfield's last memo was dated what?
What was it? It was August 31st.
Oh, okay. I don't have a.
It wasn't, it's not posted. I got it really late today.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Okay.
Can you email that to me and I can post it? Did you email it to me?
Yeah. Email it to the commission.
Open this at the risk of, is this it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it is in Mr. Handfield's opinion, the proposed plan will not result in adverse or significant impacts to the inland waters or water courses. So from the engineering perspective, he does not expect significant impacts.
Okay.
You're welcome. I'm assuming you don't disagree.
No, no.
I believe the applicants are on the line. Do they want to add anything further or address Mr. Gruner's comments or anything of that nature before the commission proceeds? It is not required.
No, we don't have anything else to add, Megan.
I will open the floor back up to discussion by the commission then, and if there's no discussion, we'll move on to entertaining a vote if someone wishes to make one. Not hearing any discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Halisty, I could move to approve the application. Yeah, Halcy, I could move to approve the application of William and Donna Phillips referencing the most current map, plan, which is appears to be revised through 8/12.
Is that correct, Engineer Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's, I'm sorry, it's dated 5-1, 2020, revised through 8/12.
Okay, do I have a second for the motion?
Ed Smith, seconds.
Okay, so the motion's made by Commissioner Halcy, seconded by Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, as presented, referencing updated May 1st, and 20th. Okay, hearing none, I will ask a question of Agent Wagner. Do you have any special permit conditions that you would recommend the commission consider for this application?
Uh, no.
Megan, this is Linda. Is this, um, motion include just regular conditions?
Halcy, would you like to respond to that?
Standard conditions?
Standard conditions, yes. And also, Linda, can you read me the date on the plan I referenced?
I cannot see it, I don't have it.
I think it's this one.
Okay, it's 5-1. I thought I said, I think I might have said 5-12. When I made the motion. The date on the plan is, the original date is 5-1.
You had the right dates, Jim.
It, okay. I'm sorry, I'd like to propose that the standard conditions be attached, be part of the motion, part of the approval.
Flipping back to Mr., I wonder if I can find it. Mr. Brunner's recommendations regarding exclusion fencing and timing of the activities. I would also recommend that the motion restricts the permit to a two-year duration. Any additional comments, discussion, questions? Linda, do I need to formally motion to revise the motion to include the two things I noted?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I will motion to revise Commissioner Halcy's original motion to include a permit duration of two years and the recommendations of Mr. Brunner regarding the timing of activities and exclusion fencing around.
I will second the motion to amend the primary motion.
Vice Chairman, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to amend the motion. So we'll do a roll call, Vice Chairman Elliott?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Halcy?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Lally votes aye as well, so the motion to amend the primary motion carries 5-0-0. So back to the primary motion, any additional discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, I will do a roll call vote, Vice Chairman Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner Halcy?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Vice Chairman Lally votes aye as well, so the motion carries 5-0-0. The application is approved with the standard and special conditions noted. Agent Wagner, can you please work with the Building Department to issue the public notice and to draft the permit?
Okay.
All right, I believe that concludes the special meetings. Or as a reminder, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 15th. I am not sure, I was trying to share meetings with someone, and don't go by the town calendar online. I, the last time I checked, it wasn't accurate, so I'm expecting to meet Tuesday, September 15th at 7:00 PM. That's what I had on the master calendar due to the Labor Day holiday, so hopefully everyone has it on their calendars. And with that, I will entertain, well, I'm sorry, I should back up, so I apologize. I offered the previous applicant a chance to ask questions before we moved on. Do the applicant or Engineer Bushnell have any questions or comments before we conclude their item? I don't hear any. I'm not sure if Engineer Bushnell is on the line, but Agent Wagner, if you can make sure to follow up directly with him and the applicants regarding the application.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Vice Chairman Elliott at 8:18, any second? Seconded by Commissioner Halcy, we'll do a roll call vote, Vice Chairman Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner Halcy?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Chairman Lally votes aye as well, so the motion carries 5-0-0. The meeting is adjourned at 8:18 PM.
Good night, all.
Aye.
And do you have everything you need for the minutes?
Hope so. I, 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 I just want to make it clear that I don't think the community room is the best place to zoom from. A lot of your conversation was really garbled.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I apologize. The alternative is a house with a two and a five-year-old crying on me, so I'll look for option C.